Yeah, I'm called to work. We're gonna start with Honolulu Fire Department's report.
Hello, sorry, we're gonna go present.
Right here.
Alright, so hello, I'm Captain Williams from the Kalihai Fire Station presenting our statistics for this month, uh, last month. There were three structured fires, two wildland fires, eight loose ends fires, and sixteen activated alarms. We also had two hundred seventeen medical calls, three motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, fifteen motor vehicle crashes, two ocean rescues, and four hazardous materials incidents. Um, for this month, our safety tip that we're trying to get out is uh, just a plea for the public to move over for emergency vehicles. So we're asking that people drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect first responders while performing the duties near or on a roadway. It's more than a courtesy, it's actually the law, Hawaii revised statutes two ninety-one C dash twenty-seven. And uh, it requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to police officer or other official duties. As indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall one, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances. Two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary, and if it is safe to do so, move over to another lane to leave one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. And just a note that emergency vehicles include police, fire, E M S, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles, while personnel. And that's it for this month.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community online? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, you guys take care.
You too. Moving along to Honolulu Police Department District One.
Uh, good evening Chair Abanez and everyone in attendance Lieutenant Arnold Segusia representing the District One Community Area Responsibility. Uh, thank you guys for your guys' time and patience, I wanna reach out and thank the Chair for uh, the pizzas. Uh, several weeks back, uh, to the substation, my guys uh, my guys and gals really appreciated it. Uh, and I was telling you over that phone conversation that uh, you're responsible for a lot of greasy steering wheels and reports. So uh, without further ado, I'm gonna get into the statistics for this month of August, for the past month of August, so motor vehicle thefts were two. On the previous month it was zero. Uh burglaries were down, it's zero, uh previous to that it was one. Uh thefts are six, it's up from two from last month. U M Vs or car break-ins are down one, uh from the previous month it was three. Assaults are up, three, uh previous month was one. Sex assaults were zero, previous month was one. Uh there was one graffiti case reported this month, and uh, in regards to uh drug offenses, there were four uh for August, and the previous month was three. Uh total cost for service for your particular area was three hundred and nine compared to the previous month of three hundred and eighteen. So uh, the uh, cost for services have kinda remained the same, uh but there are no criminal breaches to report at this point in time. Uh I participated in a Vagis and Buckets event at Walmart KAMOko this weekend, September sixth, seventh, and eighth. Uh our location raised over sixteen thousand dollars uh in the three days for special events. Just wanted to send out thanks and gratitude to the public, especially those who came and donated for these street funds. Uh upcoming events in our district that might affect you folks is the Holo Parade Festival, uh that would be occurring on September twenty-eighth. The parade will be uh getting set up uh early in the morning at six A M, uh and it's gonna be for uh all amount of each park, and it's gonna head into at Kapolai uh Park. Uh expect a lot of uh road closures and uh detours in the particular areas, and uh leave early so that um you guys not rushing uh to get to your locations, yeah? Uh safety tip for the month of September regarding uh securing loads. Uh we at HPD have been responding to a lot of calls for debris on our roadways and freeways, uh some of which are happening on Nimitz Highway. Uh it is due to not securing our belongings effectively. We found all kinds of things on the freeway, especially coolers, cooler lids, uh playpens, plastic chairs, surfboards, and even Christmas trees. Uh these items become extremely hazardous to motors, especially motorcyclists. Uh we're asking our community members to take the time and attention to secure uh loose items on the bed of your pickup truck or on your roof racks. Uh motor vehicle fatality count for this uh, this time this year is twenty-eight, uh compared to last year it was thirty-eight. Uh at this time, I'll yield back the rest of my time and to any questions from the board members and public attendees.
Then?
Um, I just wanted to thank uh first of all, my Chair for making me call nine-one-one, and thanking um the police officers. I didn't get their names because I was traumatized of what happened to me, but they, they were really excellent. From the time they got there till the time they left, they made sure that uh they walked me through everything and making the report. And I made sure that um, everything was uh necessary, what I had to do. I'm in awe of the fact of how they, they took care of everything and um I'm still a little bit traumatized of what happened and, you know, just thank, thank them, I'll get pizzas for them too. Uh just a little back to let you guys know, I was um, a man came to my house and opened the door and tried to get in, and the police was there within minutes. Yeah. So, thank you very much. I, I appreciate you.
We're all on the way.
Do what HPD do. Yeah.
Relate that back to uh the watch that went over, I think it was day watch. We're in the transition of coming on, that's right.
I also wanted to thank HPD District Number One for assisting with Salvation Army on Vineyard Boulevard. They've been having a rash of break-ins, people are hungry, I understand, these are hard times on everyone in our community. And if some ways somehow we can all pull our resources together, be positive for each other, right? Because these are the times, that people are having a really hard time struggling. But again, I wanted to thank you to all the police officers, not just District One, but the entire HPD, all the men and women in blue that are on this island, that are statewide, all law enforcement, because when something's happening, you wanna call nine-one-one, right? So, again, to the fire, to HPD, and to the ambulance, E M T, E M S, and all the doctors and the nurses, and in all the hospitals. I volunteered much of my time at ICU, medical level floor, Punchbowl Queens Medical Center, and I did that for a long time too. So again, but thank you so much for District One and all the community. Anyone from the community? No? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna move on. You too. We're gonna move on with District Five.
Hi, good evening everyone, this is Lieutenant Creighton Hartico with District Five. I'm one of the nighttime commanders at the Kalii Station. Uh can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Let me give you guys the stats for the month. Um, there were five uh assaults reported, uh fourteen auto thefts, which is down from nineteen in July. Uh ten burglaries, three robberies, uh two sex assaults were reported, uh fourteen simple assaults. Uh forty-six thefts, which is up from thirty-six in July, and uh thefts from vehicles are down to eight from fourteen in July. Uh total calls for service this uh in August were two thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, which is uh in line with July's amount of calls of service, uh two thousand eight hundred and ninety-six. Um, I don't really have a tip, um Lieutenant Segusia already provided you guys with a good one, but I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a heads up. The Police Department and other state agencies, we've been trying to do some uh homeless outreach in the Uvalde Corridor, uh because it was getting kinda out of hand with the blockage of the sidewalks and um a lot of those uh homelessness-related issues. And um, so we cleaned up a bunch of it, but unfortunately, we're a very small island, so as it happens, people get pushed from one place to the other. So now the state side uh is dealing with the influx of individuals, and it's gonna be an ongoing effort. Because we wanna try and, it's not a matter of trying to punish anyone for their situations, but we're trying to make it where it's livable for everyone, where people don't get accosted where they're going to work, um and um they don't have to deal with that sort of thing because they shouldn't have to. But we also wanna try and help people get back on their feet, um so it's not just a HPD effort, it's an effort with um all of our partners and also with you folks. If you guys see somebody in your area and you feel like it's somebody that might need assistance, feel free to call us and we can get the ball rolling. Um we have a number of resources that we're attached to, and we can offer shelter, uh food, and those sorts of things. At this time, I'll open it up to any comments and questions from you guys and the community.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Go ahead, Donald.
Um, I wanted to bring this up because uh it's getting to be a little bit of a problem. There's a lot more battery-operated scooters and smaller little bikes that teenagers are riding around the streets. They're breaking the speed limit and breaking the stop signs, and I don't know what to do about it, except maybe address the issue at high school with junior high, but it's beginning to be a problem, and one of those kids are gonna get hurt, I know it. You know, it's just uh
Yeah.
the reaction to the situation, yeah?
I agree with you completely, sir. Um, so apparently the legislature has drafted new rules regarding the electric bikes and vehicles. Um, as of yet, we're waiting for our official um, how we're gonna uh frame our policies uh regarding that, those newly passed laws, and once I get some um, some uh I guess, they're gonna refine the language of it so that it's gonna be easier for the public and everyone to understand. Uh once I get that information, I'll disperse that to you guys, but they have, they have passed laws regarding those. Um one of those things is uh, they have to be a certain age to be operating an electric bike. Reiteration that they have to, they have to abide by the traffic laws and those things. So uh, once we get some clarification on that, we'll, we'll let you guys know, but the legislature has already got the ball rolling on that, sir.
Um, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community online? No? No? Um, Lieutenant, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Okay. That's okay, because I am a form of law enforcement to myself. But um, I wanted to say thank you again to also District Five. You guys work really hard, and thank you for the undercover workers, the undercover narco-ice that is in the area, I don't wanna say their names, but they play a crucial role, and they're the silent people, they're the silent, thankless people. But they're not thankless. I thank them very much, and I thank you very much for all the time, effort, dedication, and sacrifices that you guys also endure, because I know out there, it is not easy. I know that for a fact. And for those that are in your patrol that help with the homeless, the mental health, and the substance abuse, and a combination of all of that, which is extremely hard, and those that are service-resistant, thank you again. And I also wanna mention, because this gets played over and over again on TV on Olelo, that three-one-one is a very good app in the event that there is somebody that anybody notices that needs attention and help, that it's just not nine-one-one, because you guys are overwhelmed too, and short-staffed as it is, and again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it, and I'll let the troops know.
Thank you so much, and we're gonna move it along to Board of Water Supply.
Hi, hi there, I'm online. Sorry, can't be there. I just have one general, hi, I just have one general announcement. We just wanna let you guys know about the annual Imagine a Day Without Water. It's on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from ten A M to two P M at Kapolai Regional Park. I did provide this on the, on, to Zoidell, kinda late, so it's, might be on the Google Drive for all of you. Um so we want you to come and join us and various city and state agencies and some community uh agencies and organizations for a full day of activities that will focus on the value of water, interactive exhibits including rain barrel workshops, zero-scape plant path activities, and succulent mini workshops, and more. So there'll be some mono food available for purchase, admission is free for all ages, uh so go to boardofwatersupply.com slash onewaterhawaii. So yeah, that's my one announcement, please go look at the flyer online, it has the map on the back, uh on the second page of the event. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community online? Iris, I wanted to say thank you so much. Water is life. And for the red hill of what's happening over there and the plume and all the research that needs to be done, and the efforts of the community and nonprofits that are pushing forward for there to be clarity and involvement in this community. Because at the end of the day, drinking contaminated water that can one day and will cause cancer is extremely important for us to know and be involved with what the process is for us to have better alternatives. So again, thank you so much for the Board of Water Supply and all that you do for the community.
Thank you very much, I'll pass that on. Thanks.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna move it along to um Honolulu Authority of Rapid Transit Park.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, good evening Chair Amanda Abanez, uh board members and community members. My name is Marissa Gonzalez, and I'm with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. Thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening to provide an update on the project. Before I begin, I'd like to briefly address some questions from last month's meeting regarding Heart's collaboration with Hawaii Gas to prevent gas line hits and disruptions along Dillingham Boulevard. We wanna assure you um that Heart is working closely with Hawaii Gas to minimize the risk for future incidents. As the construction progresses, both Heart and Hawaii Gas continue updating maps to ensure accuracy. Some of the smaller gas lines called gas laterals are quite old and not always well documented. So we're using extra care during excavation such as hand digging um or specialized equipment such as pot hauling to safely locate these lines. So we're committed to improving the safety in every way possible and appreciate your patience as we work through those challenges. Regarding the question about moving construction equipment via trucks to reduce road disruption, while transporting equipment on flatbed trucks is possible, the work area along Dillingham spans about two miles. So moving equipment within the work zones is more efficient and helps Heart stay on schedule. We're doing everything we can to minimize those disruptions, so uh we, again, we appreciate your understanding. Addressing concerns about vehicles turning onto Costco's private road despite signage. We appreciate you bringing this issue to our attention. While uh left turn restrictions are in place to keep traffic moving smoothly, we understand some drivers are not following them. We continue monitoring this area and we value your input, so um as cameras, um as for the cameras in the area, they're primarily used for traffic signal cycles and not for enforcement. So again, your feedback is very important to us, and so continue letting us know and we'll keep working to improve the traffic flow. Um now moving on to some updates for utility relocation. For downtown utility relocation, due to some unexpected utility conflicts, the timeline has been extended through early twenty-twenty-five. However, this will not impact the overall project schedule. For Dillingham utility relocation, we're aiming for completion in early twenty-twenty-six. At the Waikamilo intersection, there's significant work underway, and we anticipate more lane shifts over the next month or two. We're coordinating closely with the businesses in the area and conducting notification outreach as well. Uh that concludes my update. For more information about Heart and the project, please visit honolulutransit.org. Email us at info@honolulutransit.org. Um you can also call the, the project hotline, that's twenty-four hours, eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine. I'll do my best to take any questions that you may have. At this time, thank you.
Hi, Evelyn Cullen, I have one question and one concern. So, once uh Dillingham is done, left-hand turns um will become, no left-hand turns will become permanent? That's my question, and then another one in regards to downtown. I would appreciate if the cones, once the, the construction in the area has been completed, to have the cones removed as soon as possible, especially in afternoon traffic. It would really help to alleviate afternoon rush, people trying to leave, because I've noticed like um, right-hand lane is closed, and then they swerve you over to the left-hand lane, and there's no one there. So the cones hasn't been removed, and I think it needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, yeah, no problem. Um for your first question, so uh left-hand turns, um, you know, not, left-hand turn restrictions will most likely um be um, go away. Um and that's because it's similar to uh the Evaside, you know, right now currently with the guideway, right in the center um of the street. So if you can imagine that with the columns, that's where the columns are gonna go on Dillingham, so um I could potentially provide you with um um a schematic or something, so you can kind of get a visual of that, but yeah, it'll be very similar to uh the West Side.
So no left-hand turns, it's gonna become permanent? Yeah?
Yes.
Seven seconds.
Okay. Ken? Sorry, we're gonna go Ken first.
Hi, I have a question. Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Chair. Um so my question is, relating to um Heart, working with not just your S P Ls that you guys normally have, but the, you know, patrol. So the reason I bring this up is because there's a lot of times where you will say there is no left-hand turn, and there are cars that do that, and almost hit, I'm a pedestrian and also use a bus, so I look at it within that context. Um, is there gonna be more, you know, is there something that prevents it, or is there gonna be more cooperation between patrol on the HPD side and with Heart, because you still will have vehicles do that, I've seen, and myself personally almost got hit, I don't know how many times. And that's thematic that will show, will it, I'm sorry to ask this for the part, uh will it show where the concrete uh barriers will be uh in relation to where the current uh areas of the bus stops are, or, or, or just temporarily gone for right now? So the one I'm alluding to is more on the, not the uh, uh Kapolai Street, but the street right before, it's a private road, another one that goes in, right? Where the uh spurges, so could you just elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, so um, thanks for your suggestion um about safety, because of course, safety is, is a very top concern of ours. I will bring that back to our team, and you know, again, the HPD officers are and onsite personnel. They are available to assist both motorists and pedestrians as they navigate through the work areas, but of course, there's some people that slip, some motorists that do slip through that, um, some people, some motors get caught, and some, you know, slip on through, so um, it's a very good point, but yeah, I'm, I'm hearing you and um, I'm taking some notes, so we'll I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay, then we're gonna have cards next.
Hi, Aloha, um, I know we last time saw Harry, well, at least last time I saw Harry, so I'm very excited to uh work with you. Um, so, I just got out yesterday, and it's actually happening also today as we speak, with um price rising for the HoloCard for U Pass students, for University of Manoa students. And I'm very excited to see rail come through um at Prori, not Proridge, Pro, uh Pro Harbor and Kalii Transit Center. But I'm curious, is it gonna end because they said it would be finished by twenty-twenty-five? Or, as he said, would it be finished in early twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six?
Are you that, that, that was for the utility relocation. So um, utility relocation, as I mentioned, is twenty-twenty-five for downtown and twenty-twenty-six for Dillingham. The C C G S, the City Center Guideway and Stations, that will, that contract was executed and was awarded over to Tudor Perini. And so they are gonna start with the construction work of the columns and the guideway. Um, so that's gonna start up, and the whole um, the route won't be complete until twenty-thirty-one. So I don't know if I'm answering your question. So the utility relocation, once that ends, then that's when the construction will begin for the stations and the guideway. So you're gonna see a lot more work in the area after utility relocation.
Okay, that's my.
And, and in regards, in regards to uh Holo questions, that, that question can go over to D T S. Is they're in charge of uh the operation and maintenance of the system, and Heart is primarily responsible, well, we are responsible just for the, the design and the construction.
Understandable. I just wanted to be sure about the completion date, not in Kalii, rather not the uh HoloCard at the moment.
Aloha. Okay, you're welcome.
And then Donald?
Yes, um, not to be insulting, but uh Hawaii, this is the first time we've ever put up such a structure. And I think, I personally think it's too darn tall, but uh, it's a lot of stuff that Hawaii employees, the men mostly, don't have the experience to put that, a monster up like this, and, you know. I feel sorry for them, because darn it, they, they have a lot, that's a lot of work, you know, reputation-wise and things like that, so you know, it, it's kind of an in-between, I apologize to you for being, for being mean, but uh I, I can see it's happening, because Dillingham is not going anywhere, and you're gonna take this to Waikiki, my gosh, and you're talking years already, you know?
Well, yes, understood, understood.
He doesn't understand, you know?
Well, I look at the, the first operating segment, and, and that's running, and I think it, it's, it's gonna look like that eventually, right? In, for, in the area, and something to look forward to. But yeah, I, I hear you. Thank you for your comment.
All right, um I think there's no other comments or questions, so thank you so much for your time. We'll see you next month. So we're gonna move on to um educational reports, Iziosa. We had a few principles.
Oh, hi, yes. Um, so we have a couple online, I believe, Kingdom Chaperon otherwise.
Yes, yes.
Um, so just wanted to uh be the bridge to connect the schools of our district, all the, the admin, and um connect to us, that way we can get uh information flowing, and then later on down the line, I would love for parents to get involved as well. So we're gonna start here, um, we're gonna start with Mr. Hamilton, we're gonna do introductory introductions. Keep, you guys can keep it super short, sweet, simple, nothing super formal, we're just here to introduce ourselves and just get to know you. And um, so your name, what school you're from, and any updates that we should be aware about as far as the community, the fundraisers, anything of that sort. And also, it is optional, you guys do not have to stand the whole meeting, if you'd love to, you know, that'd be great too. So, goodbye, Mr. Hamilton.
Right on, hey, how's it everybody? Thank you for having me.
Oh, my name is. Sorry, gotta join the party over here.
Uh, my name is John Hamilton, proud principal at Kalii Elementary, so we are located in the back of the valley, serving the, uh Kalii Valley, although a portion of Kalii Valley homes. Um, I'm a proud uh, product of the Hawaii D O E system, grew up on Big Island, uh worked with Evelyn Cullen at Kapolai Middle School. But as far as Kalii Elementary, um no fundraisers as of yet, but uh this year, D O E statewide is Attendance Awareness Month, so um we started walking all of our students to school from Kalii Valley Homes, so seven, ten, and we put it at the gate, and we walk up, and do a walking school bus, like some of the other Kalii schools as well, so. Get to school on time, just support them, support the Kiki, and make sure that uh we provide them with a bright future as they navigate toward Farrington High School and become ghosts.
Nice.
Nice.
Thanks, thank you. Um, do we have anyone from Kaliiuka? We're gonna go down the valley. No? Uh.
Tayvai.
Oh, Kayvai? Oh no, she says she can't make it tonight. Um, Kaliiwaina.
Yes, ma'am, I'm online. Good evening, everybody, I'm Dan Loken, I'm proud principal of Kaliiwaina Elementary School. Uh, we service uh half of K P T and the central area of Kalii. I'm very thankful to have you guys, or be able to join you guys tonight. I have just a couple of updates from the school of events that are coming up. This Friday, we have a bingo night, our E L L, our English Language Learner Bingo Night, where we celebrate our English language learners and give out some prizes, um such as bags of rice and Spam and stuff like that. If anybody wants to contribute some prizes, feel free to drop them off tomorrow or the next day. Uh we also have our trunk or treat happening October twenty-fifth. We're looking for donations and participants, if you wanna come in and participate in our trunk or treat on October twenty-fifth, please give me a call at our office. Um, we would love to have you join us. We had about six hundred and fifty guests last year at our trunk or treat, so it's a great opportunity for uh community members to, you know, get to know everybody around the area, so come on down for that. Um, and we also have a lot of other great things going on, but I don't wanna take up too much time, but feel free to stop by our school at any point in time uh to say hi to us, or um just go face and see our school. Mahalo.
Thank you so much, thank you for the presentation. Um, Kapalama? So, Lama? So, Lama? Mr. Yama?
Good evening, everybody, thank you, Biosa, for the invitation. Good to see you, to every one of you. Uh, my name is Ronald Oyama, principal at Kapalama Elementary. At this time, we don't have any fundraisers or updates, but we will be hosting, I think it's on Black Friday, the Paina, um, the Kalihie uh Business Association, uh there's gonna be a parade. And then it's gonna end up at our school, but there's gonna be more um updates and news as we get closer to that date. Uh, we do have a what is called a Malama store. Uh, these, this store is for our students, they get these Malama tickets. And every quarter, the kids get to go in and trade in those tickets for prizes, so we're always looking for donations. Um, please see our front office for that. Um, I'd like to commend everybody coming to these uh Neighborhood Board. It it really is um good to see everybody and wanting to make sure that our valley is safe. And we keep on that Farrington pride, so thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, see you next meeting. Alright, um, Kalihie Kai. Mr. Kohara.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, hi, Sabrina Feliciano, principal at Puuhale Elementary School. Um, I am a proud product of Kalihie myself, so I have that Kalihie pride in me. And I am so happy to be at Puuhale, um, where I'm from. Um, currently, we are participating um in a really big project with Hawaii Walls, with Worldwide Walls. If you guys have passed our campus recently, you might have wondered what all the conclusion was, but we have over twenty artists on our campus, um beautifying our school, they are just giving art to the community and to our students. Um, each wall is different, each wall is special, each wall is unique, just like our students that are contained within the walls. Um, so we're very excited about that, um already, we get calls from the community, you know, asking if they can come and and see the walls or asking about the project, but that is something that we are very excited about. And the kids are really excited to even be able to see themselves within the walls. Some of the murals look like them, right, so they're so excited about that. Um, also, what's coming up? It's not coming up recently, but I wanna put this out now because it comes very quickly. Puuhale Elementary School is the first water station within the Great Aloha Run, the only one in Kalihie. So if anybody is um wanting to come on out and participate, we are the first people that the runners see, you know, we pass out water, we cheer them on, um so please let me know if you would like to participate in that. Um, and I think those are our two largest events right now, we have some smaller things coming up like Bingo Night and all of that, but those are the two big ones that I think the community can get behind and support us with, so thank.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, oh, sorry, Ms. Feliciano, um, Ms. Cullen, she has a question.
Hi, Principal Feliciano, I'm um Chevelle, I'm Ray's grandma.
Hi.
I'm on the, hi, so I'm on the Neighborhood Board here and I wanted to ask if you also will be having trunk or treat?
So we did have trunk or treat last last year and it was so exciting, we were so excited to have it, but it conflicted because um we do have most, about a third of our students, a little over a third of our students come to us from Kahawiki Village. And they are holding one this year themselves and we really didn't want to um buck that and and butt heads with that because they're holding it on the same night that we had wanted to hold it. So the good thing is um we communicate with them, they are part of CC meetings, so we decided to hold off on that. Um, we may do some.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Miasato.
Good evening, aloha, everyone, thank you for having us, uh the principals in the Kalihie area. Um, I'm Glenn Miasato, the principal at Fern Elementary School. Um, we have uh four hundred beautiful students that we service from, mostly a lot from Kuhio Park Terrace also, as well as the surrounding area. Um, we are grateful for all you do for our community, we're very proud to be in the Kalihie community ourselves. And the one thing I'd just like to mention before I turn it back over to you is that this is um, this year, we mark our one hundredth anniversary of our school, we will be having a centennial celebration um and welcoming back especially alumni as well as former employees of our school, so if you know of any, please spread the word and have them contact me, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Can can I add one thing I forgot to mention earlier? Um, I wanted to give a big shout out to our cheerleader coaches, um, uh Coach Ke How and Coach uh Jerry, who have uh coached our awesome, amazing cheerleader team that used to cheer at um the all sorts of events, but uh including the Great Aloha Run. Unfortunately, they got full-time jobs and are no longer able to be our cheer coaches anymore. So if anybody does something to coach a amazing cheerleading team at Kalihueina, please uh send them our way, we'd love to have them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a son, thank you. Thank you, guys, any questions for the board or any?
No.
No. Um. I think next meeting, Kalihueina, um Farrington, Dole and Kalkawa, so.
Very wonderful, yeah, yes, thank you so much, thank you, Deos, for putting that all together, questions, any question for?
Um, do any of the the school administrators know about the changes that's coming to their community in terms of the uh public housing? Like Kaahumanu, there's slated to be um changes that's coming soon, like Mayor Rice gonna be affecting um Keili Polani. So a lot of our students have received their vouchers to move out of district and I don't know if our administrator knows that.
Mm-hmm.
But um it's just a heads up, maybe HP, the Hawaii Public Housing Authority should be communicating with administrators because it's it's gonna affect enrollment at their schools, thank you.
Um, thank you, I think I can speak for the group, um, we do know about a lot of them, but uh if we have updated information such as timelines and things, uh that would be very helpful, we do know about the uh KPT um work and the stuff right behind Kalkawa. But I know there's long-term, a lot more projects coming up, so if anybody has uh a way to give us more information, more timely information or more updated information, we'd greatly appreciate that, um and they can contact me at daniel.larkin@k12.hi.us um to to give me that information or give me a contact and I will report it to the group.
And then um one more thing, again, thank thank all the principals that follow the time to be here today because it is a whole lot of time. And tomorrow, their school, Friday, their school, so thank you so much for your time and sacrifice and hard work and dedication. So the Kiki and this community, because this is a very challenging community. And has a historical part of that too. Those that have lived long enough to see things, ebbs and tides, ebbs and tides of the decades. Now, for those that are in District One, uh Schedule One schools, such as Farrington, Dole, Kalihie Kai and many others, is there a way for you guys to secure even more funding? As I had, um, for me, I have personal experience of tutoring students that have no computers at home, no mentorship. So I would be part of that after-school programs at Farrington and at Dole Middle School to help to mentor children because sometimes when they go home, they have no one. So could there be more funding to make sure that there's streamlined, because there was a time when I was there that all of a sudden that fund, those funds went zero and all those children had no place to go after school. So can we help to secure more funds and more programs such as to expand Palama Settlement and those kind of programs to keep kids out of the bad hands, because if we don't have mentors teaching the children to do better and be better and to strive for excellence and the highest potential of all children are have that potential to be, if we're not talking to them, someone else is. So please, please, if there's any more and any time to create more funds, to have mentorships and programs to train and to teach children and even early elementary school, the earlier the better, the better our community will be in the future.
I believe, uh, Mr. Miasato has a question.
Okay, Mr. Miasato.
Hello, um, well, I wasn't wanting to speak, but um I just wanted to say thank you for that, for saying that. Um, we, on our part, we we are so concerned about the other voices that may influence our children, especially after school. It is one of the biggest things on my mind as well as our school. So we are, from our part, we are trying our very best and working very hard to create after-school um programs that will interest and and take advantage of the great talents of our beautiful students. Um, we've just started begun our dance uh club after school, our media production club after school, our volleyball and basketball teams after school. And um we're looking for, we're trying very hard right now, we have the money and the instruments to try to create a band program after school because we believe that the more positive things that our students can get involved after school, the less there will be, less time they will have with um negative influences, which I see every day as I walk through the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much for noticing that. Cards?
Hi, mahalo nui to all the principals that are currently here again. You can, I don't know what uh, how to go by this, but my question is, um, what is the most pressing issue that your school currently has that we can do to help at the moment?
Anyone wanna go first?
We can only say one? Um, I would say that just as a whole, uh and for my school, uh it's just getting the students, you know, into the school. Um, we have teachers, I think, at all of our schools across Farrington Complex that uh know that our school is a lifeline for them, it's a safe island within the community where they can have uh free meals, right? Be provided everything that they need, the care that they deserve. Um, as far as needs, uh every school is unique, but across the board, it's just safety. Um, and kind of to reiterate what uh you were mentioning too, it's um providing those opportunities for them to know that it's not just uh the education and academics that go on, but it's the social emotional learning, it's the after-school sports to be something and be part of something bigger than themselves. Uh, once we know that we're able to provide those opportunities, it's gonna be their pathway for them to engage a higher level, a higher level in high school, uh hopefully in college and moving on, so it's a great team that we have and uh I'd like to think that we all work together to support the Farrington Complex.
The community, thank you so much. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the community? If not, thank you all the principals for all your hard work and dedication to the community. And we're gonna move along. Um, and then we're gonna go to, oh, board business. Uh, election of Board Officer Vice Chair. We have cards, I wanted to nominate cards.
Second.
Third.
And second?
Second.
Any?
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? During them?
Cards.
For cards, Vice Chair. Yeah, um, eyes?
Eyes.
Eyes.
Anonymous. Um, names? None?
My my question is first, sorry.
Okay.
Um, are you guys keeping the um the two Vice Chairs or are you just making only one Vice Chair?
One's, one is in now. We love that.
Thanks. Anonymous, eyes. No names. Cards, welcome, Vice Chair.
Aloha, I have to get up for this one.
Good job, good job, yay! And then we're gonna move to approval of minutes, Wednesday, August one first to the twenty-fourth.
Approval of minutes.
Second.
Second, okay. Minutes approved, see holiday parade coordination.
Ooh.
So yay yay, what are we gonna do?
Do we have a sign this year or are we gonna hop off of Kalihie Valley time?
No, where where where, uh where's the um?
We have funds.
Where's the funds, Dunin, where is the Christmas parade?
So Black Friday.
Black Friday.
It starts at the um, the Kalihue Union Church and then it goes to Kapalama, that's what Mr. Oyama was saying, that we're gonna have a Paina at the end of it.
Uh-huh.
I was run by the Kaila, the Business Associate, Kalihie Business Association, Association. Um, yeah, they ended at Kapalama and then they have a bunch of uh games and free, correct, correct, I'm wrong, Mr. Oyama, but it's a free event after the parade, right? From what, from last year, it was free, um except the food vendors, but other than that, games and stuff free and lots of donations, it's pretty fun, good music.
Okay, what day is that?
Black.
Black Friday, okay.
Yeah.
Oh. Wanted to mention, does, I, because. Um, sorry, so I don't know, but I feel like I'm hallucinating, but I think I saw the banner in my house.
Oh, okay.
Wait, Kalihue banners. Like the Kalihue Palama Neighborhood Board mi- uh banner, I think I was the one that took it home.
Oh, do you have a banner?
So you took it.
Okay.
Oh, I took it, okay, no, okay, then I wasn't hallucinating, I'm right. Okay, I'll leave it in my house and I'll I'll stay here.
Okay, so so can can we coordinate outside of the board, board?
Also, a question, is there, is there a way we can coordinate with the Kalihue Valley too, just to give it in unison, you know, just, but it's too big, too many people.
You guys can do it, both, you know, you guys can walk together as well.
Just walk together with Farrington, so I'd have to pass back and forth this time. It's a lot of walking. But it would be nice to be in unison, it would be nice to all be together.
But that's all, but just make sure.
A trolley.
Can we trolley?
Sorry, I'm I'm three.
Turn in you guys' participation form on time.
We're for the participation forms.
Got it.
So we're gonna have enough trolley? Do we have enough money for trolley?
It's Dana, it's actually Dana, what do you call it?
Dana Yak.
Yeah.
Oh, trolley, name what?
Yeah.
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 Trolley. So who's on board, who's on?
Out of curiosity. Hi, cards.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, um, is it okay to create a group chat with the Kalihue Valley Neighborhood Board regarding the Christmas parade or not?
You can contact them if you guys need to.
Let's do it. Can we do a WhatsApp?
Because that's a trend outside.
Trolley.
Okay, I have um, I have the chair's number, so.
Okay. Yeah, because I I've seen the name, I have to make sure.
Talking, walking, talking, walking.
Can Mr. Oyama comment on anything else with the Paina, Mr. Oyama?
Sorry.
Mr. Oyama?
Yeah, so I know that the games are in the gym and that was sponsored by um Metro Church. And there were um, a couple of uh lunch, uh what do you call those mobile?
Trucks.
Trucks, yes, food trucks, and because it was successful, and there were a few um people with uh boots selling trinkets and and stuff, so um I know they're gonna expand the food trucks because it was like one of the concerns or concerns that they had was there was only like three, so, but we wanted to make sure that it was successful first, so I think this year they'll be expanding.
Nice, we'd love to see it.
Okay, that's it, okay, we're gonna move forward now. Um, yeah, I'm excited, hey, coordination, here we go. Uh, so then we're gonna go towards presentation, I must want to have these. Hey, gays.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I do have a little presentation I can um.
You can share screen.
Yeah.
Share my screen?
Oh, yes, I mean, I want to, that's, I do.
Looks like you're doing some things.
Yes, and while I'm doing that, um, I'll introduce myself, I'm Nanta Kane and I'm one of the station senior managers.
Yes, and while I'm doing that, um I'll introduce myself, I'm Nancy Kane and I'm one of the station senior managers. You might have met Stephanie Kulee when she was here two months ago. Uh she was already on the island, but we are partners and we're co-site leads, she had a baby though, so she's on maternity leave and that's, she's not here today. Uh but it's so nice to meet you, I wanted to introduce myself at least. And I brought two of my operation managers, um this is Andrea, this is Alieana. Andrea leads the over um on the road operations part, so when the drivers leave our facility, and Alieana leads the under the roof part of our operation, which is processing the volume and getting ready to go on. Um you're welcome to see, so I think you guys wanna about yourself like, you know. Yeah.
It's so exciting seeing the, all of the um the principals, yeah, and then I think, I think I've seen you at Kaliki Waina. Principals, yeah. And this, this office.
Maybe, yeah, my son goes there.
Yeah, at the, yeah, the coffee, the principal's coffee.
Oh, yeah, but they're working, so that was fun to learn about some of the things, uh and thank you Daniel um for the help uh and what we can do in the community, I'm super passionate about that. I uh have been with Amazon for about eight months, uh but I came from Target. And so if you shopped at the Ka- uh Kailua Target, I was the store director for for there for about four years, uh overall with Target for nine. And so we were number one in the company for volunteer work uh in the company, which is really, really cool. And so we're super passionate about community involvement and engagement uh at the site, so um I was really close to y'all, the principals here, so really great job.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we were taking a lot of notes on all the different things that they're looking for some assistance on and just being able to
Nice.
identify like where we wanna also be able to help contribute to, so.
That's awesome.
Oh, very good.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Welcome to Kaliki. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Pukualai is the closest school to
Mm-hmm.
Amazon, yeah.
I think you guys can see my screen? You see the little? Really?
Not yet.
Not yet. Sorry?
Seems like it's uh spooling. Hi, everyone, this is Steven Madulli Williams, also from Amazon, yeah, the the screen's spool uh spooling right now.
Let me know when you can see it.
I love the female leaders.
Yeah.
Yes. Cheers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really cool that my boss is a female and her boss is a female, so.
Love it.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe, no, sure.
Do you need a hotspot?
I I connected on my phone for the hotspot, it just, it just keeps going in and out. Do we have the wifi? Pass right here?
I don't think that's right. You don't, you don't need the, you don't need the.
Sorry, we can hear.
Nancy, is it the, is it the same material?
Yes.
Do you want me to try and share it from here?
Sure. Sorry, Maria, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Let me give it a shot.
And I looked up, you know, anything I come up with the parade, um me personally, I love, I really love that kind of stuff. Of course. We will accept everything. We'll accept. And yes, about the Popeyes, you cannot get into Popeyes without those Popeyes. Yeah, I can't, I tried to go, I tried to go today. I'm trying to turn, I don't know where to like go. Yeah.
Nancy, it's up, the presentation is up.
It's.
Okay. One question before we start, do you want me to restart the timer or just continue on?
Right?
The timer.
Timer.
Do you want to, do you want to use the timer?
Oh, no, it's, it's.
Yeah, I shouldn't take the, shouldn't take the timer.
Okay.
Shirley, um.
Yeah, I see Shirley.
Sure, so yeah, here's a picture, this is at our ribbon cutting ceremony.
I see Shirley, I see the mirror.
This is super exciting, um and that that's our team, so you can see, you can see most of us on here, but we have a great crew that um super dedicated, so we're excited to be here, so. Um so the next slide. Go over, so just wanted to share with you, so I was told that we were, we wanted to share the uh traffic flow and some of the concerns that were brought up at the last um neighborhood board earlier this year. So after reviewing that, we reviewed traffic concerns and with the Department of Transportation Services, based on their guidance, we did the following, we confirmed parking restrictions around entrances for maximum visibility, uh aligned on truck and van routing and proposed no through transit zone. We built this into our routing system, so vans could only transit through the area if making deliveries there, so the app will tell them to avoid that area. Uh and we are communicating the same with our associates during their onboarding and posted reminder flyers throughout the facility. Um at this point, we have done all our, all our hiring for the associates right now, we put a pause, we hired over four hundred associates. We've had very, very little attrition, less than one percent attrition, and we have about a ninety-eight percent attendance rate. Um and so we're really excited about that, our associates are amazing, they are so excited to be there. Um we actually um have been really engaging, they've been volunteering in the community. Um as we're ramping up, we are starting with very little volume, but that's intentional because we want to get to know the area and we want to be sure our deliveries are quality before we start doing more and more deliveries. But we did just um expand our jurisdiction today down to like the Waikiki area, down to Hawaii Kai, down to the east side. Uh so you'll see us a little bit more in the community, uh our next jurisdiction change will be next month and then we'll be going up a little bit more north at that time as well, so you'll see more vans throughout the um the community and and super excited as we're ramping up the volume there. Um we've also continuously been hiring deliveries, uh drivers, associates, so we have about two hundred and fifty right now, but continuing to ramp up. So we hired a total of about six hundred and seven hundred uh community members. Excellent. Um the next slide will show you alt, also just so you know our hours of operation. Um so one twenty to eleven fifty A M is our associate shift and that's, that's when they're working, so they work ten hour shifts and they work four days a week. Uh for a total forty hours, this is off full time, we also have a flex uh crew that they just pick up hours as many as they like, um and they can pick up depending on what our business needs are. Uh so we submit through this portal and say, hey, we need hours here, then they can just pick up the shifts that they want, depending on their schedule and what works for them. So the associates will come as early as one twenty, that's when we start our operation. Um and we started so early because we need to get the drivers on the road at by ten twenty, so that's our first time that we actually dispatch. Uh so that's when the drivers will exit and we go in waves, so we have one wave of drivers come in, they pick up routes and they exit, next wave of drivers come in, they pick up routes and they exit, and that goes to about noon. So our last wave departs from the site at eleven fifty. And then they go on the road, our associates leave, and then it's kind of like a little bit of a quiet, quiet time in the station. But at this time, we're tracking and monitoring what is going on the road, tracking with our delivery partners, um helping them through barriers that they're experiencing on the road and just making sure we're being attentive to our drivers. Then when the drivers are finished with their routes, then they come back to the station to drop off any packages that were undeliverable. So if they had any issues on the road, if the business was closed or um various reasons, if the customer canceled their uh their order before we got to them, that happens sometimes. They're not able to access it, they'll come back and then that's what we call to return to station. Um and then that starts around four P M, depending on like how fast they deliver, uh and that ends around ten thirty P M as well. You see a little bit.
That's uh Mokuaia and uh Pukualai for the no through traffic, if that's what you're looking for?
So what is this right here?
That's Kaliki Street and then the one on the outside is Sand Island Axis and then Awiki Street up against the the station, yeah.
Cause I'm right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's what we, we're trying to avoid.
Yeah. So the mixed residential area, we're kind of avoiding that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And um and then the last one of our four is just when our delivery service providers or drivers are coming in to get ready for their shift as well. So you know, I don't know if you've seen our building, but we are three levels, so we have a second level where our delivery center service providers park and we have a rooftop as well, nobody's parking on the rooftop right now because we haven't expanded there and we're trying to keep them covered and shaded for now, but there is a roof parking if we do need the additional parking spots. Any questions, anyways?
Just.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, I I just have one question in regards to Awiki Street, whereas merges into Kaliki Street, that turns into quite a
Yeah. Yes.
Not, not Amazon, but that's a lot of big trucks, they whip the corner and they're going like forty, fifty.
Yeah.
And I'm coming out of that street, H O E Street, so a lot of near misses for me, so I don't know what D O T is gonna be doing, cause I did ask for them to put like a a bump like they have going up on Kaliki Street. Um cause with all the new added traffic in the area, it's gonna be even more um unsafe for us to traverse the area, so.
Yeah. It's a, it's a good observation, I think we can definitely address it with um our partners and just make sure that they see what they're seeing and making sure that they're aware that this might be something of a.
Because another concern was Young Brothers, because on Awiki Street, I had submitted something and um Mokai had presented it to Young Brothers as well. Um I showed the big trucks, tractor trailers are backed up and using Kaliki Street, Awiki Street, Libby Street, Nimitz Highway as a parking lot entering into Young Brothers, so um I don't know how they're gonna address it other than um Drake Kalivi mentioned that they're gonna soon open up Kapalama Container Terminal, so everything is gonna be done on the inside. Um I did notice some changes on Nimitz Highway where they are not parked anymore, it turned into a parking lot. But the parking lot now is on Libby Street, so I can see this, you guys are gonna see it.
Okay.
You guys are gonna experience it.
But but Nancy, it's Maria here, um we have plenty of parking on site for our trucks, right? So we won't be adding.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all, yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, Amazon's a good neighbor, so far so good. Any general question?
Thank you.
Any, can we do, any other questions?
Well, oh, I didn't know if you had a question about that one, um and then I was just gonna share with you the the next slide, which is uh the line hall routing, just so you guys are aware, that we are getting trucks from the airport and trailers, forty forty foot trailers and those start from eight P M to six A M. And they're coming through Sand Island Axis Road. Um and right now, we're getting, I mean, at the max, we should be getting about one every thirty minutes to one every hour, we're not getting that many right now because our volume is low. Um but um I just wanted to share with you guys the route and just letting you know we are adhering to the D T S recommended routing. Um and now the side park, he does accommodate all trailers, vans and associates.
So this is Mokuaia Street and where the stoplight is, they're gonna be entering this way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where the stoplight is, the the number two road?
Number two. Yes.
How come they're not coming in from the back, is there not entrance?
There isn't, to to get to the, to the yard.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's right there.
It's that one fence, yeah, that gets them in there. Um I did also want to share that we uh also partnering with our community and doing community excellence walks. These are monthly walks that we do that uh helps us look at the neighborhood in the eyes of our neighbors and um addresses parking, lighting, asset maintenance, noise that we might be contributing to, right, traffic? How are we appearing to our community, um trash and speeding and making sure that we mitigate anything that can be a disturbance to the community? Um also, we wanna help our community, so what we are seeing is we can help with with any litter cleanup around the community that we might not be doing ourselves, but we wanna be partners and um we wanna help with that, so that's something that we're starting as well.
Excellent.
Um so super excited for that. And just wanna share also what other things we've been doing through the community, we've done again cleanups, we've been volunteering, I mean, I can share all of the things she's been spearheading it. Um at the food banks, we've been um contributing to like just giving, at the, I was at the ribbon cutting ceremony. Um we had artist work, I know there was a school that has artists for a publication, we had Solomon come and did a beautiful mural in our
Solomon, you know?
In our ribbon counter.
I don't know if you guys are familiar with that artist?
Yes. Yeah.
You can fill out the last name, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um we do have a donations program, so anything like that, that we can donate from our site that is a loose item or that we can't return back to the fulfillment center for whatever reason, we have a huge one and we're planning on contributing and growing that. Um and then we also have a local goods program, which we could always use help, we are looking for nonprofit partners, so that's basically a free transportation service that we provide through our delivery service partners and they're happy and willing and they really want to go help and provide that free transportation to provide donations to nonprofit partners and we're always looking for points of contact or people that we could expand our service with, so if you know anybody, please let us know, I think we're all getting a few ideas here as well. Um but if you have somebody in in mind that we can expand to, we are eager to help the community in that way, so.
Fantastic.
That was my presentation, I was um opening it up for any other question.
That was. Uh one comment for me is um for the Mizuno.
Yeah.
For John Mizuno.
Yes.
We always need him. I like to work with him.
Okay.
Okay.
Um so if there's a way, I can be a bridge.
Yes.
Get you guys in contact with one another.
Perfect.
And really reach out.
Okay.
To the greater community of those that we need the most.
Okay.
And to inspire change in certain areas, um that would be great.
Thank you so much.
I I I think in our area below Nimitz Highway, the primary concern would be illegal gambling rooms, yeah, and and our and our homeless friends.
Okay. Okay.
So um that's a challenge for our area, that's why I got involved.
Yeah.
Um and then a lot of um
It's a.
Illegal businesses dump their trash, like they they'll leave boats here and there. So the Honolulu Three One One app helps me to report them and the trash gets picked up in boats removed in in the area, so like on Pukualai Road, there's a lot of heavy equipments left, so I'll go and take a picture, report it and then come back. It's gone. So it's just being diligent that way, but now knowing Amazon is more than willing to help in the cause, um this. Plug you into the government.
Yes.
Sector.
Sector. Absolutely.
Is John D T S or?
Mizuno.
John Mizuno next, yeah, he's like.
He's a home. The home is for the base.
Yeah.
Well, just for the.
Okay.
Listen, the home is.
Coordinator with Governor Josh Green.
Okay.
So we'll touch base as well. Just comment and then um from me, uh love what you're doing, love the community outreach, I'm for it.
Yes.
Only concern is toys on Ma Street, Eleven Beckley Street, um our street is highly trafficked from kids walking, um a lot of our feeder school kids walk through, two incidents, two drivers, two vans, um speeding. I know the road is kinda nuts right now because we do have construction from Paul's company, um but if we can ask them to slow down cause we live, I live right across from a basketball court and there's those kids like running to the street.
Okay.
Um you know, just random people walking the street and they're, they're wearing the AirPods or they're just not aware, so just
Yeah, okay.
watch for the Amazon drivers, so just slow down.
Okay, you guys can.
Beckley?
Beckley Street. Okay.
B E C K L U Y.
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Yes, of course, that's the stuff we wanna, we'll wanna hear about, and cause we can put an immediate stop to that.
Yeah. It's so good because I think uh Steven has been very receptive to community input from the get-go because I I see it in what you presented here today, so.
Yes. Yes. Good.
Thanks, Steven.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Being so welcoming and helpful, so appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I think, is that all for the community?
Yeah, okay, thank you ladies so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll find a way how to get you up.
Oh, we're getting started, I will tell you that.
I'll be in touch.
Okay, my contacts is good.
Uh can we get that?
Oh, yeah, and I'll be your point of contact for as far as of schools. Yes. Perfect. And I'll share our, we, I did create a community email, it's D H I two slash community and I'll share that with you. Okay. If I get your contact, then I'll distribute it um out, but you can always reach out to that one. Uh it'll go to all of us, and you can reach out to us directly as well and I'll share all the contacts. Thanks, thank you.
Does, does Amazon need um
Thank you.
Yeah, but.
The bus to be operating at late hours of the night for the employees?
Yes.
So then that's something we can bring up.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes.
Because the bus stop, they stopped in front of it, was something that we had.
Oh, I don't have.
Yeah, that's.
People.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay, yeah, I know that.
Knowing Amazon was coming, yeah, 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 take care of your.
And I love your.
Yeah, definitely, we uh we definitely wanna.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And then um Army Garrison? Name of the Army Garrison?
Eight or eight. We just see the nine nine, five nine, zero nine.
Yeah.
As always, as always.
It's hundred six one five zero. Then you choose.
Okay.
The two four.
And so if um I wanna do a course, like because I, so U S Army Garrison, Selena against Wall Street? Okay.
Thank you.
And is she online?
It's, I'm, I'm going to let you know the best.
Okay, so we're gonna move on with city elected officials. Um Mayor Rick Landry has been represented, Stephanie Lee, Chief Director, Steven Courtney.
Yeah, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, yeah, good evening to Kali'polami Board members and residents, my name is Stephen Courtney, the mayor's representative and deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. I will start with highlights from the mayor's newsletter, the link can be found in the chat. The city takes action to address crime along the Waimea coast, a surge in gun violence last month. Prompted an unprecedented federal, state and city and county upon a little response. Nearly thirty brand new security cameras were installed in Chinatown with more on the way. That project was designed and engineered by the Department of Information Technology. The deployment is a collaborative effort between the Department of Information Technology, Department of Transportation Services and Department of Facilities Maintenance. Mayor R. Blangardi joined by Honolulu City Council members and leaders of Oahu's first responder agencies held a healing vigil at Sandy Beach Park on Thursday, August eighth. To honor the victims of the Maui wildfires. Years of blight on Pensacola Street, a hoarder home was demolished. And Honolulu has been named the most desirable place to live in the nation for the second year in a row. According to the Economist Intelligence Unit's Global Liveability Index. Environmental issues followed by six items. Board member Farm asked if the Narcan, if um asked if the city provides Narcan and training in the use of Narcan to the public. Unfortunately, Honolulu Emergency Services does not provide Narcan or Narcan training to the public at this time. Board member Cullen requested a representative from the Environmental Services Department attend to respond to questions regarding sewer charges. Environmental Services is happy to respond to questions about sewer charges, please contact eight O eight seven six eight three four eight six to speak with someone directly. If a visit to a future board member is still needed, one can be scheduled. Board member Cullen asked about the status from Department of Facilities Maintenance on two Honolulu three one one reports she made. Mokuaia Street property on sidewalk needs to be cleared. D F M Stewart Property Warden's branch with Honolulu Police Department assistance investigated their complaint of legal dumping at two two seven Mokuaia Street. Trash and debris were removed from the sidewalk area on August nineteenth and September third. Awiki Street property on sidewalk needs to be cleared. D F M's S P O branch with H B D assistance investigated the complaint of illegal dumping on August fifth. Trash and debris were removed on August nineteenth and September eleventh. Board member Guerrero asked about damaged sidewalk and road front in Leeka Leeka Elementary Teacher's driveway. After investigating, the driveway is within the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation jurisdiction. D F M has referred this request for repairs to the damaged sidewalk to H dot. For further follow-up with H dot, they can be contacted at eight O eight five eight seven two one six zero. Resident Thomas Beck asked when the trees that were cut down for rail be replaced along Diloham Boulevard near Honolulu Community College. This project is under the jurisdiction of Hart and was referred to Hart for reporting at a future meeting. And finally, the board chair, Venice, requested that H B D perform checks at night due to repeated vandalism and breaking at the Salvation Army on two ninety six North Vineyard Boulevard. From September fourth to the tenth, Honolulu Police Department District One, night watch patrol officers made nightly checks in the area of two ninety six North Vineyard Boulevard. But did not but did not observe any vandalism of the property or criminal damages. Officers will continue to make checks and take appropriate enforcement action when they observe violations. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Evelyn?
Are there any questions?
Hi, Evelyn. Yes, hi Evelyn Cullen, I just have a a quick question in regards to one nine four Kalihii Street. Um, that's the house that was burnt three times by our homeless neighbors. And so the property owner had told D P P that they're in a litigation. But if you check Eko Kua, there's no lit active litigation and that's the excuse they've been using for the last five years. Every time I call them and spoke to them and complained about their their um encampment. Now, it's it's a total encampment and it's a a burned pile of ash and I wanna know if they're gonna be fined daily until it's removed. Or what action is being done, because it's over a month, it's going on six, seven weeks and it's affecting my property value.
Let's do it.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you for letting me know about that, I will pass that on to the Department of Planning and Permitted and hopefully they'll be able to provide a response at the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, and then Stephen, I have a request, uh, I reported on three one one app, this was about two weeks ago. And this is for the Kalihii Canal and this is the bridge right by Marokai Marketplace. Okay, there's that St. Cameron, it's been there for such a long time, I know they're service resistant. But it has compiled to the degree of wow, unbelievable. Like, it's very shanty and it's very unsafe, it's very unhygienic.
She's shanty.
And if there was a huge rain or storm, that would could become a problem for everyone. And we don't know who's in there, what's in there, what they need, what's going on in there, we don't know. But those whoever's living in there, they need some help and please get them the assistance they need, cause I reported it about two weeks ago. And I was on Hawaii News Now talking about that months ago.
Oh, wow.
So please, if you can, please reach out to them.
Okay, I will pass that on, so you said that was reported about two weeks ago on three eleven?
Yes, and several months ago, I think two or three months ago, on Hawaii News Now.
Okay.
There was a segment. So if we can get something going for those people, that would be great, they are service resistant.
Okay, I will inquire about that location.
Thank you so much, Stephen. Are there any other questions from the board, any questions from the community online? Hearing that, thank you so much, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
No, thank you.
Okay, and then we're gonna move on to council member reading, Guerrero.
Linda.
Yes.
No, I asked her to come.
She's the um, Linda, oh Linda, okay, hi Linda.
Hi everyone, um, good evening, Chairboard members and community members. So I am Linda, I'm council member Guerrero, is represented this evening. I have tried to put the link into the chat, but unfortunately it's not cooperating with me, uh, so hopefully you can hear me good. Um, so I did provide a written report, and I believe it's on the document, document, um, the Google Docs, uh, council members' report. And I apologize, I'm not able to upload it in the chat for those online. Um, however, council member did want to note uh some meetings and events and deadlines um that she wanted to highlight. Um, first is the Honolulu Forest Department is having their recruitment and career fair on September twentieth from eight forty eight P M at the Kamakana Allee Station. Um, the second is the la, there there is a last community meeting for the primary urban center development plan. Uh, which will be on Monday, September twenty third, six P M at Akoan and Akoan Middle School Cafeteria. Third is the community meeting for the safe routes to school update, uh, which will be on Friday, September twenty seventh, from five to seven P M. At Susanna Wesley Community Center. And lastly, um, this is not included in the report, um, however, she wanted to inform all. Uh, homeowners, that the deadline for homeowners to file the real property tax credit to reduce their property tax for the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six tax year. Will be on September thirtieth, so all homeowners must apply every year to continue receiving this credit. So if you need more information or assistance, please contact the tax relief office at eight zero eight seven six eight three two five, three two zero five. Again, that's eight zero eight seven six eight three two zero five, or email B F S tax relief at Honolulu dot gov. Council member also wanted to thank the Department of Facility Maintenance Stormwater Quality Division for hosting a cleanup for the Kapalama Canal. Which was on September fourteen. Um, there were eleven volunteers who came out and they helped to clear trash and debris that totaled sixty five bags of trash. Um, she also wanted to thank the Kalihii Connection Coalition members for coordinating another successful We Are Kalihii event, which was on August twenty four. Um, as a member of that coalition, council member wants to thank everyone who came out to celebrate um our Kalihii community and get together um in that celebration. The report also includes other state of updates with bills and resolutions that may interest you as well as, including that the council is calling for weekly Navy testing for Red Hill. This concludes my report and I'm available to track any questions.
Any questions from the board? No, thank you so much, I think that's it.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you so much, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to council member, Adra Dos Santos Town.
Aloha Chair, Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Town.
Hi, hi.
Hi, um, hello board, hello community. Um, I, Linda did a fantastic job and much of our reports would um would be, our report would be redundant, so I'm gonna be really brief. Um, council members newsletter link is in the chat, my contact information is also there. Um, did wanna highlight that on August twenty ninth, council member Dos Santos Town and council member Talba, who represents Hawaii Pahu and Ava. Co-introduced Bill fifty four related to e-bikes. This bill works to provide a framework for classifying various motorized vehicles to provide better safety regulations and allow for better enforcement. Um, so, um, that Linda had mentioned, Monday, September twenty third is the community meeting for the primary urban center development plan. I would just add that that plan was adopted in two thousand four and now is going, is currently in, we're going revision. So that that meeting again will be at Akoan and Akoan Middle School, um, from six to seven thirty. Um, and our our office, I don't know if anyone has seen over at the in the stream area, but there was. Um, a considerable turnout for that uh cleanup, which is fantastic. And our office has been working closely with community members and city departments to keep that area clear and keep the stream clean. So I would ask our community members, board members, if anyone observes any tents returning or illegal dumping happening over there. Um, you're you're welcome to use the three one one app, but um it it'd be very helpful if you could reach out to us too. And um, and we'll be happy to help to to submit requests to the city, so um. And kinda we're we're, it's it's a better way to to track. Um, the kind of wraparound services that they get over there or the S P Os that happen. Or when the Department of Facility Maintenance is able to get over there and maybe get larger items um with B N V. So, um, please consider reaching out to us so that we can help with that. And um, with that, that concludes my report, uh, if anyone has any questions for me to take back. Oh, no, I'm sorry, one more thing for, um, I did wanna kinda piggyback on, um, board member Farm's question about Narcan. Um, it was council member Dos Santos Town that kinda championed that bill so that, um, businesses with liquor licenses within the Chinatown area. In within the district would have uh be required to have the um Narcan on hand. Um, currently Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, you can reach out to them, they have Narcan. Um, but also board member Farm, if you wanted to reach out to me per personally, we have some on hand in the office, I don't know. Um, if what the intention was, but um, I just wanted to put that out there, that it is available. It's just, we're partnering kind of with the city and through Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction. And that's it.
Any questions from the board? Any questions online? Thank you so much for all that you do, thank you so much.
Thank you guys, my pleasure.
I will be, okay, moving along to Senator Carl Rhodes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and members of the board, my name is Brayden Chung and today I'll be representing uh Senator Carl Rhodes, uh, and as I entered at his office as well. So as an overview, we'll just be going over uh some uh COVID concerns. So last week, the Department of Health reported uh four hundred and forty six new COVID cases with a seven day average of sixty three cases. And ten deaths for that weekly period. The state is seeing, uh, still seeing the impact of the recent surge in COVID cases. Uh, Senator Rhodes encourages you to stay up to date on your COVID shots as well as flu shots. And if you're over sixty, there is now a vaccine for respiratory uh syncytial virus or also known as R S V. Uh, and Senator Rhodes highly recommends uh anyone in this demographic to get this uh vaccine. Uh, a new updated uh twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five COVID vaccine has been approved for use. And COVID nineteen is uh now slim similar to the flu in that uh flu shots, the, excuse me, sorry. In regards to the uh shots just preventing uh COVID strain, uh. Excuse me, the most the most prevalent strains of COVID, uh, and these vaccines are not meant to prevent uh ev- every COVID variant. Rather, it aims to protect against uh severe illnesses, hospitalizations and death. Uh, our office uh is preparing for bills next, uh, for next session. If you have any bill ideas, uh, feel free to contact our office or let me know uh as soon as possible. Uh, and if you have any uh ideas, you can voice your ideas uh right now. Uh, and I believe you guys have uh Senator Rhodes's uh contact information, so you can also reach out to him as well.
Okay.
Question? I have a question regarding the ten deaths that you've mentioned. Um, were they primarily from COVID or is it because they had underlying health issues?
Uh, I don't have that information right now, I can get back to you, uh. I can get back to you later, um, I can I can ask uh Senator Rhodes about that as well.
Yes, please.
Any other questions from the board? Online? Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Sorry?
Yeah. You can come up.
Come to the party, come, why you so far?
Good evening, my name is uh Mr. Beck, um, I have a question regards to uh. Uh, the COVID vaccine, uh, I think there's enough evidence to show that although it has done a very good job, there are certain people who have reaction to it. I personally know seven people who have passed after taking the vaccine, a lot has to do with their underlying um. Medical issues, so with that being said, I would um just caution on pushing the vaccines. I think it should be more like anything else, uh, go to your doctors, um, make sure that uh they um qualify. Where they don't have certain underlying conditions, I do, so I can speak firsthand on why you should be careful. And that's it, that's all.
Actually, one more thing, sorry, just to piggyback on um Mr. Beck's suggestion, actually. I'm surprised that we pushed the vaccine a lot more than we push healthy living, like exercising, getting your kids outside. I wonder if they could implement something like uh, what Ash was saying, like they did before, how they give discounts or reimburse this for fees, you go to the gym, settle for the gym. You know, just to kinda level the playing field, instead of pushing pharmaceuticals, you know, medicine, medicine, vaccines. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a non-vaxer, I'm vex, I'm vaccinated, um, my son is vaccinated, but just pushing more healthy living and. You know, having a better lifestyle would be great too.
Uh, I second that.
Also, pigging back in on that, I believe that uh I agree with vaccines and everything, but also with the fact. But also with the fact that we need to make our roads a bit more accessible. Um, I don't know what's going on with the bike lanes since we have been updated. But that is a perfect way of, uh, healthy living. Uh, just trying to make sure that we have better ways of mixed mode transportation. That's not just, you know, cost effective, but also, uh, yeah, cost effective and, um, viable, living effective, if that makes sense. I don't know, what was the word right now? Thank you.
So many avenues lead to good health. You know, so thank you so much and we're gonna move on to Senator Donna Mercado Kim or Representative.
Hello everyone, good evening. I have sent my community, community report digitally, hopefully you all got it. And to board members as well as the public who have, uh, called my office or sent us their emails, we've sent that to them. And if you haven't gotten one and would like one, uh, you can always email us and we'll get that to you. Uh, let's see, there's not a lot going on as, um, Carl Rhodes' office reported. We are working on, uh, getting ready for next session, uh, looking at bills and potential things that is going on. I did wanna mention that the University of Hawaii has announced their two finalists for the president. And certainly they will be making their rounds and I urge you to listen. And if you can attend one of those, um, rounds that they're going to have, uh, public, uh, what is that, public hearings, I guess, with, with those candidates. Cause it's so important, the leadership of our university. Also, the culinary program at Kaila Ladi Community College, uh, that's something that they are partnering up with the Culinary Institute of America, trying to upgrade the program. And, um, tomorrow I'll be going out there to witness what's going to happen. I also wanna share a little bit about what complaint that I got from a different district, but I think it also applies, uh, to our Kalihii Palama area. And that is about, um, neighbors burning green waste in their yards. And so if in fact, uh, there are anybody or neighbors that are, you witness burning, uh, green waste, it is against the law, so just know that. And that anyone violating that open burning rules can be fined up to ten thousand dollars per violation a day. Agriculture burning is restricted to legitimate businesses and good individuals and, uh, permit is required. The Department of Health's Clean Air Branch accepts complaints and you can call them at eight oh eight five eight six forty two hundred. Or you can email them and that's all in the report. So if you do witness anyone actively violating the open burning rules, you can also call nine one one. And, uh, with that, uh, any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Hearing that, thank you so much, Donna. Thank you for all your hard work.
Awesome, thank you all.
Have a good evening. Um, we're moving on with, thank you, Senator Glenn Makai or Representative? Representative Daniel Holt? Representative? Okay, none. Representative Sunny Gavadin?
Aloha everybody. No, aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I know that, uh, my microphone, I don't know, my sound was off last time. But, um, aloha, hi, hi, kaukou. Um, how am I allowed to speak today or tonight? Uh, my name is Kelly and I'm the office manager of Representative Gavadin. Um, he started that he can't be here this evening. Um, in twenty twenty three, Representative Gavadin's Safe Routes to School Bill was signed into law. And at last month's update, I mentioned that our office was in the process of planning a community resource meeting. Um, tonight, I'm here to formally invite you all to the upcoming community meeting, uh, on a Safe Routes to School update, which our office is organizing in collaboration with health members Radiant Pordero and Tyler Dos Santos Town. Uh, the meeting will be created on Friday, September twenty seventh from five to seven PM at Susanna Wesley Community Center. Um, this event will serve as a check-in with the community, gathering feedback, sharing updates on the future plans to improve street safety throughout the state following the passage of the Safe Routes to School Bill. In addition to this town hall discussion, you will have service providers from state agencies and community programs present, offering services and distributing valuable information. Lastly, food will also be provided for attendees during the event. Um, anyone with questions or concerns that they would like addressed by the Department of Transportation about the Safe Routes to School program is invited to contact our office. You can reach us at, I'll put our contact information in the chat. Okay, here you go. I just put it. Thank you, I'm available for questions.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the committee? Hearing that, thank you so much for all of your hard work. And then we're gonna move on with Governor Josh Green's representatives. Okay, um, community reports? Anything for safety or health? Hearing that, we're gonna move on to community resources and education institutions. Uh, Honolulu three one one app, Honolulu three one one app is the official mobile application of the city in Kaila, Honolulu, Hawaii. Honolulu three one one provides a free, simple and intuitive platform empowering people to report poples, broken streetlights, cracked sidewalks, illegal dumping, vandalize broken signs and more. Please utilize your smartphone. Announcements, the next Kalihii Palamanian Headboard number fifteen meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday, October sixteenth.
Wait, I have a quick question about the three one one app. Where can we report, um, like commercial vehicles with illegal parking or like auto shops and all that kind of stuff? With that, we got the app too. Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, seven PM, the Kalihii Palamanian Headboard number fifteen recording is can be seen on Olelo, channel forty nine or at W W dot olelo dot org, uh, slash live at the following times. First Monday of each month at nine PM and second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven AM.
Did we skip community concerns?
Yeah, we did, sorry. Any community concerns?
Um, it was the request to last meeting, yeah?
Okay.
Um, um, they had presented, uh, mayorites, uh, construction. And, um, part of that is they showed, um, I'm not sure which housing it was, where they had, um, was it?
Kahumanu.
Was Kahumanu? Okay, I, I did not know that they're planning to build similar towers.
Is that? It's different from mayorite housing though. Mayorite housing, they're gonna tear down the whole block.
Right.
This Kahumanu gonna be up phases. Yeah, phases. Uh, mayorite housing will take ten years in phases. Kahumanu, is they gonna build up?
How high do I, how much?
It's gonna be high.
Similar to, um, mayorites?
Similar, mayorite housing will be, will be high too.
I guess, I guess it could be, um, one parking.
Yeah, the parking, I don't like the way they're gonna make it. I think, I think they, what they should do is that, what I don't like is that they don't, they, they only have this one construction company coming in and building. I like, you know, I, that's why I asked, how come they're getting the, the bids? Because they have only one set of plans.
So this, this already is a done deal?
I don't know. I, I think so.
Cause I didn't see anything about, they projected it.
Well, they're, they're going, they're, they're going and they're talking to the, the residents already. They're in the process. But you know, the way that we did it in Iea, they came to the board and they needed, they needed our permission. We didn't go through the, a permission over here. They just presented it.
That was my concern.
Yeah. They just presented it, um, in Iea, whoever comes, they needed our permission, our board. We, we gave our signatures, but over here, they just did a presentation.
There's a little bit different because of the TV.
Yeah.
Transportation and development.
Yeah.
We're part of the real, I understand.
Right, it's part of the rail line and jurisdiction of that.
And anyway, it's, it's a done deal regardless of that. The problem is, like anything else, infrastructure and, really, a lot of it is old.
Yeah.
I mean, my house is perfectly exact sheeted. Um, if you look at where I live, on, on Bickin Shee, that area at one time, the average lot size was, size was twenty two to twenty five thousand square feet, one house. Yeah? Uh, I use my, where I live as an example. My original property was twenty two thousand square feet, was split into three. So now you have six houses, where you used to have one. So now you have six families. It's the same sewer line that was built in nineteen ten. So, you know, I'm just talking, my property, if you expand it towards this five block.
When you look at McNeil
Yeah.
and across by, across by Meigs.
Yeah.
Then you get all that over there and they're gonna build this monstrosity of how many buildings to get and then how much for the parking lot. It's, I'm telling you, it's not gonna work, but I thought they was gonna bring them back over here because
It's not the state, right?
So it's just something we can do, but there's nothing we can do.
So they're gonna come back, you know, they said they're gonna come back.
They're gonna come back? Because when you, when I visualize it, there's no way that they can hold the parking for that many people. There's no way.
They're gonna come back, yes.
Um, the secret thing is water. I mean, if you look at what's happening with, um, I hope it doesn't happen, but they're looking at closing down another well. That's for another hundred thousand people. There's no new wells on the, I mean, the only water that come in, not in Kalihii, but it's coming from Hawaii, by Kana, that's going towards, like I said, I know, we have nothing here. You know, to bring some, that much people in this area, I, I don't know. I, I just think I'm, and
I understand what you mean, cause I was, I went back home and I thought about it. You get the one in mayorite house and then you get Kahumanu and then they're gonna, they're gonna tear down Kamia Hamia too.
Yeah.
You will get all that in Kalihii, plus this, this monstrosity of the heart. This board better think, really think what's happening in Kalihii.
It's over here.
Yeah, cause that'll be long gone already.
We
Six feet under, you guys go to
No, 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 it's not that. One life, one life, it's a routine. All right?
Okay.
Thank you so much, beautiful, love it. Can I just comment how I love how fast this went?
I know.
I know. This is the first of four nine.